Face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Michael Chino?
Here.
Mr. Paul Flanagan?
Here.
Mr. Chris Hall?
Yep.
Mr. Ronald Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Jason McRae?
Here.
Mr. Keith Mills?
Here.
Mr. Richard Olivo?
Here.
Dr. Christie Oakland?
Here.
President Lewis King?
The worst of two divisions in one division, let's move to panel of the nation. Although you may see that, there was a young, in expression, question from the audience. You're not afraid?
Ah.
In a problem, what do they care? How we did is adopt medical in seven nineteen twenty twenty three, call it three. You've adopted one, they have been able to achieve. We discuss, question from the audience. You're not afraid?
Ah.
In a problem, what do they care? They said they didn't adopt medical in seven nineteen twenty twenty three, then we have a reason.
I'll take a moment.
We've adopted two years.
Yes.
They've adopted a correct, we discuss, question from the audience. You're not afraid?
Ah.
In a problem, what do they care? New business. If you're a gentleman, you can't even go stay back a bit and take the soup, if you're here. If you're a woman, you're not technical. Credit checking the C A F I born called the Capital Area Finance Authority, on here. It's a term of mind, please.
I'm Bridget Homer with the Capital Area Finance Authority, also known as CAF. We are asking to have the opportunity to present our resolution. Just to give you a little history, the Capital Area Finance Authority, we've been in a trust indenture with East Feliciano that we entered into since 2014 when we became the Capital Area. We offer down payment assistance to borrowers who just need some help getting into a home or if they need help with the closing costs or even with the prepaids. With the interest rate that has been increasingly climbing, it's been even harder for us to sustain our program. So we're asking to enter into a bond which will give us the opportunity to present those borrowers with a lower interest rate. But in order to do so, we do have to ask for a resolution for you guys in order to enter in. There's absolutely no risk to the parish, there's no financial obligation entering or entering into. It's just allowing us to really add an additional program that we're currently already offering just so that we can have that lower interest rate in order to offer this to the borrowers. If there's any questions or anything that I can put your mind at ease for?
So you said there would be no program on the police jury?
Absolutely not. There's no risk. We operate through lenders, we partner with lenders, we partner with villagers, we do home buying seminars with them as well to really kind of educate the borrowers on what they need to do in order to be purchase ready so that we can hopefully eventually put them into a home. But our program is, it is, it's a grant that they offer and then if they stay in the home through our program, I mean they're offered that down payment assistance.
I'm totally agree with you. The price of a home is a lot easier.
It is.
And people be helping with it too. So I totally agree with you. So what you came in?
Is that good to say it all makes a motion?
Absolutely.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you actually for calling, they are going to scale off the board program, the digital contract program, so that we can fix that. Look at the process of that, that was not a surprise.
Absolutely.
It was, it was because of the audience. You're not afraid?
Ah.
In a problem, what do they care? Next, say, call the hand for the doctor, I'm clear. She wants to go down and talk to me. You want to start?
Sir.
Tell him to leave. Any discussion?
I got a question.
Yes, sir. Come to the mic, please.
I always want to learn, it's many of y'all can anticipate. Why y'all have a public hearing for y'all to accept the road that was built this way this far already?
You take it, it's like the monique of the office, you say I quote, it's like.
Okay, have y'all heard of the Marines, you know who the Marines are? In the Book of Acts?
Yeah.
Remember what they said about them? Paul was preaching in Berea. And Dr. Luke tells us that the Marines were more known than the Thessalonians because they would search the scriptures daily to see if what Paul told them was true, if what he said stacked up to the scriptures to the documents. So I bring that up because you have your own parish ordinances, you have state statutes that dictate what's supposed to be done and what's not supposed to be done. It's probably a pretty good idea if y'all review your own ordinances and read the state statutes on all matters and when you get legal counsel, you can actually have an opinion and not just accept something blindly with what the legal counsel's saying you're right. So my question would be, could you cite to me where in your parish ordinance or state statute requires a public hearing to accept the road? Because I can read both in the state statute and your own parish ordinance where it does not.
It doesn't, Mr. Jeff, it doesn't stay in there that we have to. I think it was brought up because some of the parish may want to have an opportunity to come here and say, guys, y'all adopting new roads when our old roads are garbage. And I think we're just trying to give the parish an opportunity to voice their opinion on that.
Well, that's fine, but that's not in your ordinances. And you've already had a complete vetting process when this map was submitted, preliminary surgery, whatnots. You've already had two public hearings, public planning commission and the police jury to do that exact thing, Mr. Chris.
I get that.
So I mean, that's fine, as always, y'all can do whatever you want, but you're operating outside of what your own ordinance say by doing this, and it's just holding up the process, you set a precedent. Because I doubt if you did this with the other more recent subdivisions where y'all accepted the roads. So I mean, I'm just trying to get y'all, bringing this up. I don't always know everything, but I don't think there's an ordinance on this. I don't know why y'all wanted to lay on this thing. I know I've heard legal counsel say, even after the developer comes in here, presents his plans and everything, and y'all give him the go ahead of planning commission and vet, the public has a hearing on it, and you tell the developer they can move forward on these roads. And I've heard legal counsel say that it's still up to y'all whether or not y'all want to accept this road, which I disagree with that too. If you tell someone on the front end, your ordinance say, here's our standards, develop this road according to this, and on the tail end, it's pretty clear, y'all have both printed out here, state statutes and parish ordinances, what they have to do to get this road accepted by y'all. So as always, I guess y'all can do whatever you want, but you're operating outside your own parish ordinance and the state statute. I just would not, I would suggest or?
We're not trying to operate outside the ordinance, is what we're trying to do, is make sure that we try to get everybody a voice in the parish's order. We know what they have to do to meet them, and they have, and they'll be adopted as soon as we have them.
So moving forward, on all of the subdivisions, you're going to have three public hearings for the public to have a chance to complain whether or not the parish wants to take in a new road.
I can't answer that question, I'm only here for three more months. But in the next three months, yes.
Well, you gotta have some consistency, and y'all don't have it.
Well, I won't be here, so I can't answer.
What, what, what do you expect? We do it for work, we do it for my.
Well, you haven't done it yet, so this is a new thing.
This is a new project, a new project. Thank you. You know, how many? You got what is that, a lot of things?
Ah.
In a problem, what do they care? Sit for, you're going to sit, put it to speed, and five days.
Any search? Maybe.
Yes, sir.
Remember search?
Yes, sir. Five days. Approve code for American fire system for replacement of fire alarm system at the pre. Twenty-two thousand and forty-five. It's a matter?
Come on up, Mr. Uh.
One sentence, it's a matter of course. Well, actually, that system, we've had a couple more. Another time, I was trying to get it straight. It's the original system that stood in jail nineteen eighty-five. It's a dinosaur, it's absolutely, you can't find any parts to it. State fire marshals always have great tag. So, but they are great tag, so the state fire marshals always have put us in violation because it's a great tag. Once they great tag something, neither camp can fix. So it's just got, got replaced. Because we can't, we're always doing, we're not doing.
I'll agree. I'm sure y'all make the most of it.
I've got something to say.
Yeah, I want to add something to it.
What?
I found out about this Thursday, a friend, whenever I see this area. Didn't know anything about it, and I don't like to stop things, but I don't like surprises. My question is, how long have you been tagged? You've been knowing about this a long time? You know, it's, it's, you know, I just don't like to be surprised. It's pretty good, twenty-two thousand, it's a pretty good surprise. I know we got to fix it, I'm not saying we ain't got to fix it, just I don't like surprises.
Okay, this is, this is where the deal, we go back to Paul. They gone to the warehouse, they found old parts, they did whatever they could to fix it, and on this time they couldn't. It was people paying to do the insurance to pass prisons. That was one of the things that we had a set time to get it fixed, because if you don't fix it, you got two problems. You got, you're not going to be able to insure that pass prison, and you got to rack up a whole bunch of fines from state fire marshals. So, but it's not something that we have kicked out of the road. It's something that over the years, for a few, we've been there for a while, Mr. Kent, everybody's been there. This is something we've talked about over the years. We've, we've had so many problems in that pass prison, we've had so much stuff to fix in that pass prison. Sometimes we got to take care of the worst things first. We kept this long as it could go, and now that's just a point, we have this day.
Where's the problem?
We got to have a program.
Chris, how much? It's creepy for parish workers, they just done when they killed him, is that going in this price?
It's a new, that's, that's to do a code of grand.
I realize that, but I mean, if they worked on it for a month and they make a hundred fifty dollars an hour, it don't take long to run a bill, but I'm just wondering what kind of bills that?
This is, this is what I would kill. That's the quote they gave, to replace it. All right, so it's, I don't have any, I can't answer any of the questions about?
And it's almost fifty years old.
It was there, when the parish.
Ninety-eighty-five, seventy.
So any other question, you have to, she got to label that bomb on company. I can't answer them because that's all going on there. Now I can call them, they can count, point you to, that's something I can't. What they did, part of the show is just to get, I don't want to lose our insurance, let it be from another show. What to insure the trip at that age.
I'll just ask you a question.
I did want to ask, Mr. Hall, is that money going to come out of the money that we earmarked from the sale of the old furniture store? Or is this additional money that's being asked for? Because we allocated certain amount, and it's to be dispersed over all the properties that we own, the Indian prayers.
Uh, we were having a bad time, I mean, we can't, we got a rainy day for fun, if we need to hit it, but I think right now we're pretty blessed on, on the funds. We're lucky.
So the one seventy allocated to Shabisha, I guess we spent that, to your knowledge?
Yeah, financially, financially, you're strong.
So I will not change it, because we said we were going to use it. I'd just like to respect the best, that it stays on track where it's going. Because you just been on the courthouse, you just been on the chair, and it'll be something else, of course, like you know, do we have?
We got a lot of good, a lot of old.
I know that. We got, you know, we got, I didn't talk to her about this other day, I mean, Christmas is coming, she already has been forward to two months, I need to come out of that money, so we're not having to worry about, you know, that great.
Submit for it, all, all that way, Chris, sixty-five. Any discussion? Can we give that in favor? Give it in, give that in favor?
Ah.
Get a call? Okay, just on the jury, panel of the nation.
Oh, very well. I have the one.
That's all right.
All right. I have a petition from Iowa subdivision, where basically everyone signs, uh, like ninety percent, because everybody wasn't having. And, uh, just the neighbors on the Iowa subdivision, and they have signed this petition to have their roles paid after years of waiting. Some of our neighbors said they're going to have fifty years, forty years, thirty years, twenty years, and still rocks and dirt. So they are very, very frustrated, um, and they really want something done. I mean, what do you call it, coming in with that machine and, or grid? Yeah, but it was, it's a horrible mess. Rocks all and ditches and dirt, and it's just not good. So our community is asking for somebody to come do something before somebody kills themselves. People that live in four wheelers, doing all kinds of things, and we have a petition that is too long. After fifty years, they said every time he came to me, they, not none of you guys. Uh, they said he next on the list, next on the list, fifty years, next on the list, forty years, next on the list, thirty years, next on the list, twenty years, next on the list. How you going to be next on the list and never get it?
What's the name of that word?
Christie and Carol.
The turtle, all four of them.
All right, I'll write up Ida. It's, it's called Iowa subdivision. And it's Carol goes straight and Christie circles around the circle. And, uh, it's too long, and you have a lot of older people back there, and that's one of the reasons I told them, they didn't have to come out here, I represent. Um, they've been back there, and grandparents and everything, it's just a mess. So, um, we are asking that you guys could us, give us some kind of consideration to do something back there, to help that group. And I had Dr. Christie.
Yes.
She's, she's our representative back there, she's, I'm sure you're aware, because they said they've been speaking with you as well.
Right, and you know that, um, I think unfortunately, they were told by a previous juror that they were going to get their road done, and that's been fifty years ago.
Fifty years ago.
And as we discussed here, we're not blacktopping any gravel roads. They made this decision about six years ago, before us new guys were even on there. But they made the decision not to take any new roads.
So what are you guys doing in a case like, we promised these people fifty years ago, and we still on rocks and dirt right now? I mean, we should have been rampaging in after all that time. And you remember what y'all decision that y'all made, it was after the fact?
They would say we would do any program, you say, first of all, we're going to fix, oh, just the table, the standing, the side, we can do that. We never said we would never do gravel road.
All right.
We don't have the funding to do the hard surface road, that's not going to do gravel road. We had some low success last year, one law loan came up to one point three million dollars.
Well, they told me.
Yeah, we can't, we just can't afford that. We tried to get an overlay project going on about six months ago.
Probably a few.
And probably cost a few, and everything is down low. We had two point three million dollars set to the side. The lowest bid that we got that came in was three point six. And, I mean, so it got put to the side again, we tried to raise, just trying to get some more money, some more funding then, but until then, we not going to do any road, especially a gravel road. We just, we just don't have the money to do this thing.
So I'm going to tell you, people y'all say, no.
I mean.
Right, I mean, they, I mean, really?
Please, please, your petition, we just put that.
I will. And then I have another issue, I think I, I put both of them in. I have, I'm on Christie, and, um, I asked, I called, please, everybody here, but when the money came, and my whole noise is going down, and the water comes from the street all the way down, it's like a hole in the ground. So I was just asking for somebody to come out there and take a look at it and see if the, the trench can be done.
You know, there was a ditch, ditches, it's still in, is that what it is?
Well, I think you really have too many ditches back there, because they're all just not, not suited. So I can't even say it.
You're the second house off of the main road, you know, the first one.
I'm on Christie, you got to come up, you got to cross Carol to cross Christie, I'm in the back, forty-one eleven.
Look at someone out there, look at the problem.
Christie.
About this.
Christie, Mike.
This will cause more than you could have found.
I think they've been out there more than, okay.
Yeah, because we, yeah, when the whole road went down, I called you guys.
They did some work out there, they did work out there. Do you have a car for, out there?
Uh, no, uh.
A driveway car, right?
Yeah, kind of sorry, yeah, yeah. That's all I can say.
So we cannot dedicate the problem. Thank you, Mr. Jeff. If you want, we can make it there. If you can make it, I'll get it. What do you have, maybe?
I want to have a family.
Fun, you, you have to follow.
Motion to approve monthly invoices.
Seven. Any discussion, question from the audience? You have a standard?
Ah.
In a problem, what do they care? They can get it. How do you want to call this, get you credit?
Uh, one, two things, three things.
Um, first of all, I'd like to let people know that the, uh, new track, uh, pothole patching truck made it in, so we did get that this month. And, uh, we're working to repair the Caruth Road Bridge, and works coming along good. We got started a little earlier than what we had planned to, and, um, checked on it today, and it's coming along real well. Hopefully within the next couple weeks, we can get that bridge, like open, try to help those people out there next to me. That's all, guys.
I like that.
Chris, I know.
On the pothole patch truck is really nice. Whoever that she has assigned that to, that I hope that they take some pride in, uh, keep it up, and, uh, be very mindful, but also, somebody's got to get help accountable. You know, that thing's got a count, a snout on it, first time it gets tore off, it just got tore off. That's, that's, uh, I just, I hate to say that. What we pay for that, somebody needs to really pay attention.
You will be, you will be going to come?
You know, I just have to look over everything, a share or something, and I, you know, I, I speak that wrong. I just hope it's a very quick year.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. You have a problem, Mr. Richard Olivo?
Uh, I had, I said, I might need to say a question.
Minister Jeff, you have a question?
I have a couple things, the jurors, um, who have not signed up but would like to attend the DMCO annual community leaders social event, please let Kelsey know, the event is scheduled for this Wednesday at Popsle Stop from five until seven. Walk for Life in the Feliciano is get, it's scheduled for this Saturday. The walk begins at ten a.m., fellow Jeff guys will be there, maybe for around nine thirty. Those of you that are walking with us, the start and finish is Landmark Bank. Mary Bird and Women's Hospital will be here on Friday, October thirteenth, from nine until two to offer breast and colorectal cancer screening. We have flyers available for those who would like more information. A public hearing is scheduled for August sixteenth at five thirty to receive public comments on amendment to the Gas District Number One ordinance, and that's to reduce the number of board members on Gas District Number One. Also, Dr. O'Queen will celebrate a birthday on tomorrow, and happy birthday from all of us at the Feliciano.
She will be sixteen years old.
Mark?
Yeah.
I have two birthdays. Are you not as old?
I'm not as old.
Can you tell me something? Call us to choose, Deb, you want?
I have just three things on here. Wednesday, around nine to ten o'clock, everyone that has a cell phone should be getting a test from iPods. I talked about that the last, uh, meeting. Hey, they're doing a nationwide test, that's with the emergency alert system and everything. So if you get something across your phone, you don't have to sign up for this, it is being activated off of every cell phone tower in the United States. So don't be shocked when you see something come across. Uh, Riverdale Nuclear Plant, we're doing a drill Wednesday at nine o'clock at E O C. That's all, we're going to get that phased during the middle of it, so don't panic. It's not part of that. And we're having grants open for two thousand twenty-three for E M P G and sheets of grants. They're active right now, and we're working on those. And that's going to be a lot more money coming in right now. Okay, good, I'm getting ready to spend a whole bunch more.
One, one question.
Wednesday.
What's the, uh, stand with Burn Van?
Burn Van, we're still active on it, pretty much just about every parish around here is keeping it, because nobody's had rain. We're, we were out on Deer Creek, uh, off Battle Road Saturday, by the big one, and luckily, we got enough phone calls quick on it. We kept it down to just a few acres. Forestry is now repinding with two dozers on every collar we have, and we have a crew from New Jersey now, a wiling crew that is responding along Will. And they went on one day on Lion Road out there, because they had a transformer blow, when it blew, it hit the ground, it jumped both sides of the road right there, and they got out there, I mean, and got it all out.
So the one man that didn't have a cannon?
Yeah. They were in Pointe Creek Parish, uh, Friday, no, Saturday, and they were in Old Lake there. It was three feet high, and they were, where it's usually all water, and that crew was out there helping them. So anytime we get a fire right now, if you see a weird looking brush truck going out right now, that's good there. If they're here for two weeks, if they get enough fire calls, and we're pretty much keeping them busy right now, that they're going to keep them another two weeks, they're going to extend them, stay longer.
We even bought it for, ladies and?
Hey, I need to ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
The, uh, solar plant, have we received anything off the solar plant?
Yeah. Oh, the one?
Yeah.
Yeah, the one, it's still looking over.
Okay, have they done any work on?
They, they're doing trees, looking right now.
I understand, I understand, Mr. Frank, I understand, you want to be, that's. I understand, I understand. It's good, they want to score it, that, the solar plant. You know, it's not safe that I'm against solar plants, so, uh, I'm just, I like to kind of check on the comment over there. While I'm looking to, uh, they're gonna have the issues, I think, that's something that, that this jury has to be using some form of time.
Well, um, and we should be receiving something as soon, um, to go for the jurors for road usage, so we've been...
Still, still, I get that, anything, right?
Oh.
Yeah, that's, that's here.
They, they did it out right now on the company to come in and start, when they finished doing the logging, to start digging all the stumps out, leveling it. That's sixteen hundred acres, so they could, it's gonna take them a while going there. They looking at about fifty pieces of equipment. They come in there, some of the real big track hoes, land movers, that they got to level it, and just can't take the natural rolling peels.
Uh, I guess we'll, everything about this on the right now.
Mr. Michael Cheetham?
Yes.
Mr. Kyle Minkin?
Yes.
Mr. Chris Hall? Mr. Ron Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Jason McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Keith Mills?
Yes.
Mr. Richard Oliver?
Yes.
Dr. Chrissy Oakland?
Yes.
President Lewis Kim?
The Chamber held its annual mix and mingle at Galvez Rum Distillery on Thursday. The event was a huge success. Business owners and employees from throughout the parish and surrounding parishes attended. The Chamber will meet on October twelfth. Our annual trunk retreat, um, on Law Use Road is scheduled for October twenty-seventh. Remember to shop local.
Excuse me, I'm still confused. I got a few more questions about Iron Creek Lane. Y'all, several meetings back, have made a motion and passed an announcement to accept this road. So, before y'all accept that road, Mr. President, I'm assuming it's a question that your engineer inspected that road and passed inspection, y'all have a motion that y'all approved, accept the road several weeks back?
You agree, that's what you are.
Okay. So, it was inspected according to the ordinance, the engineer inspected it. Y'all approved this thing several weeks back, and you're still gonna hold a public hearing on whether or not you're gonna adopt this road. So, is there any situation whatsoever that you're not gonna accept this road, that you already approved several weeks back? It's already passed inspection by your parish engineer. And that's not the reason why your legal counsel spoke up. Several, he said y'all did this wrong. It required a public hearing to adopt an ordinance. That legal advice is dead wrong. So, that's all. Thank you for asking, cancel your question. Well, by having the hearing, you put in no circumstance whatsoever that Iron Creek Lane has been approved, and you're not gonna not approve it, because it's already done with all the requirements. So, you're wasting time from the developer, and you're wasting the public's time. And the public's already had quite sufficient time. Y'all are doing wrong by having this public meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Kim. Is this too loud? I'd like to share with the jury and everybody here today, uh, there was a celebration to this getting of Solomon. Uh, the White House has saluted landmark disability legislation today, and I think that is for the month of October. Actor and disability rights advocate, Selma Blair, on Monday helped President Joe Biden mark the legacy of the American Disabilities Act and the Rehabilitations Act. Um, you guys can Google that if you wanna read it. I'm just gonna give you a synopsis. Um, President Biden, quoting these laws are a source of opportunity, meaningful inclusion, participation, respect. And as my dad would say, the most important law dignity, Biden said. Be treated with dignity, and showing that the American dream is for all of us, not just for some of us. I'd like to remind everyone, I've come before the jury several times, and now said the microphone is being used. Um, thank you to those of you that always do that. It's very difficult here during the meeting and at home. It's almost impossible. It's just a marble mess. Just try. And for those folks that seem to think it's too much trouble to walk up here a couple of feet and use it, I would ask that you please try, um, for people that don't have it as easily as, as we do, and can't come up here or come to a meeting as easily as we can. And thank you very much for your cooperation. Just, you know, do what you can. It doesn't have to be perfect. I know we have problems with the accoustics in the room, but just do what you can. You know, just try. And just, it, it's just so much easier, and I'm not just a bit myself, I'll always stand up for others. Thank you very much.
I have one, Mr. McCray. I just wanna know, on our new patch, are there different types of materials that it's finally out for? Or what, mixed combination?
I don't know that right off. I have to go over there, actually, within, um, in the car.
Okay, I can do that. I'm just curious. I didn't know if you had it.
No more public comment. If you have a camera, walk to the door.